Great, good evening. This is John Ostashevsky, Vice Chairman of the Board of Finance. Today is Thursday, July 23rd, 2020. It is now 6:13. This is a special meeting of the Board of Finance of the Town of Monroe. Please allow me to confirm those members, staff, and participants who are present can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Craig Hirsch?
I'm here, John.
Steve? Steve Kirsch?
I'm here.
Dane Kirk Navy? And Rebecca O'Donnell?
Rebecca O'Donnell here.
Thank you very much. Our staff will introduce them. First Selectman Ken Kallog, I don't believe he's here. He's off this week. Finance Director Ron Bonofsky?
I'm here, John.
And Deputy Finance Director Heidi?
I'm here.
All right, I hereby declare that we have a quorum and call this meeting to order. A copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted to and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website, www.monroect.org for public inspection. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor LaMont's Executive Order Number 7B dated March 14th, 2020, using go-to-meeting electronic conferencing technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so please be sure that you have access to the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on first-access basis and is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that we will not exceed this participant limit for this meeting, should it appear that we are approaching said limit so that any member of the public has access to this meeting, I, as Chair, reserve the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please take notice of the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting. any member of the to review time, the meeting is open to the public. Public may listen to this meeting anonymously. This meeting is being recorded, and while we ask that you mute your must recognize to speak, and anything you say, do, or screen shall be available to the public. All standard primary procedure, however, please mute your microphone to reduce background noise when you're not speaking. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall clearly state your name and title for the record, and the use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting if confused. With that, we can call the meeting to order and review of the meeting minutes and voting records for June 18th, 2020.
Steve Kirsch, I move to accept meeting minutes and voting records for June 18th, 2020. This is Craig Hirsch, second.
Great, all in favor? Well, we can't just say ayes. I've got to do the the roll call. Craig Hirsch? Steve Kirsch? Dane Kirk Navy? Rebecca O'Donnell? And John Ostashevsky, I say aye as well. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. First Selectman's Communications, he's not here, we'll pass on that. Look, participation, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak, announce yourself by name and address one at a time. I don't know if anyone's called in, but we'll give a few moments if there is someone from the public who would like to speak. We'll ask again if there's anyone from the public that likes to speak. Now it's time, please to announce yourself. Hearing none, we're going to move on to the next quarter of business. Unfinished business discussion of the three-year budget model. It was supposed to be a summer project, maybe that'll be a fall project. I'm not sure when we'll get to that, but it is important to keep it on here, so we don't lose sight of the the need to do that. New business, discussion to reappoint PKF O'Donnell O'Connor-Davey, excuse me. LLP is the town's audit firm for fiscal year 2021 and review of their performance letter dated July 17th, 2020. Anyone have any comments or thoughts on that?
So this is Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. Ron, can you tell me what the, what their rate was this year? They, they referenced a new rate in the letter and they said it was an increase, but there was nothing indicating how much of an increase or what their cost was this year?
Sure, Steve. The rate for the current audit is $66,000. So that is a, let's see.
Two percent?
Yeah, it's rounded. It's like a 2% increase. I don't it's like 1.8% increase.
Yeah, it's a little under. Yeah.
So I did have the discussion with the audit partner, Joe Sinefani, and he, I was trying to keep them as flat as possible. He said their cost of the audit, and again, that's at, you know, billing rates at 100% is in excess of $100,000. He said he was going to try and keep it as tight as possible, and that's what he came up with. Now, there is a caveat in there because of the, he doesn't know if there's going to be increased work on their end as a result of the CARES Act and FEMA filings. You know, if, if there's additional increases in the, in the work, in the testing that they have to do, he said he would let me know. He just couldn't even tie that into the quote at this point because he doesn't have the information.
Okay, so I have two other questions. The first one, what did we put in the budget for this year? Do you know off the top of your head? For them, was this quote covered is really my, my question.
Yeah, let me, part of it would be covered on the, the board side and part would be covered on the town side. Let me, I don't have a budget right in front of me, Steve.
$50,000 for us.
So $50,000 was covered on the town side. I'd have to dig into the board side budget.
Okay. I guess my other, my last question, and this is really to people who were on the board before me, since I've only been on since November, is there anyone who had any issues with them? And I would ask Ron and Heidi as well, because obviously I haven't, you know, I haven't had any experience with them, so is there any reason, you know, negative feedback not to, not to keep them?
You know, from, from my perspective, no. Through this, through this whole situation, I've had, I've had to use them as a sounding board on a couple of occasions, and they've been very responsive. You know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say our relationship is perfect with them, but I wouldn't expect it to be. They're, they're here to do an audit and, you know, it is what it is, you know? But when, when I've needed them for, you know, advice on how to handle certain situations, especially during this COVID conflict, they've been, like I said, responsive and helpful.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, John.
John, this is Rebecca O'Donnell. I just had yeah, Rebecca O'Donnell, I just had a comment. Ron, you mentioned that they referenced $100,000. Is that their cost rate that they're telling you?
If they were, if they were to bill us their, their, their full, a lot of times when audit firms do governmental work, they end up writing off some of the fee. I mean, that's just a reality.
Um, yeah, when I was reviewing, I have no way to know whether $67,000 is, you know, a going rate unless we were to, you know, test the market and go out to other firms to quote on it. But I'm fine. If the partnership is healthy, then, and we think that $67,000 is doable per our budget, then I'm okay, you know, going forward.
Just for the record, I, I did, you know, under the current situation, I discussed this prior to this meeting with both the First Selectman and the Chairman, Chairman of your board, and both were okay with this. For a couple of reasons. Number one, trying to conduct an RFP this fall would be very difficult when we don't know what we're dealing with. And, you know, Mike, I agreed. I thought the it would be very, it would be a challenge.
And I know that we, we had talked once about doing an RFP maybe last year, but I agree. I, I think the landscape is very complicated right now, so we have to, you know, put resources where they're most needed. So I totally understand that, you know, what's the priority right now. So I understand.
This is Dane Kirk Navy. I just have two quick questions. How long have we been using them? And does anyone remember when was the last time there was a, an increase?
So Dane, this is Ron. So there wasn't a slight increase last year. I believe the fee the year before was $64,900, and it went up to $66,000. So there was a slight increase last year also. And the last time we've used them for, this would be the sixth year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, John Ostashevsky, Vice Chair. So Dane, that's a good question. Most of these contracts have a 2% or 3% increase per year during the life of the contract that you sign up for from day one. So the less than 2% going forward this time, I mean, I'm in agreement as well. I think it's a, it's a fair number, given what, what we don't know, which is a lot right now, so. Craig, any comments from you? You're the lone wolf who hasn't said anything yet.
Thanks, John. This is Craig. Yeah, the one thing I was saying, I know previously we did discuss, you know, kind of testing the waters, looking to see, you know, about maybe going to another audit firm and so forth, but there was nothing in particular that would drive us there. It was more of a, you know, let's see what's out there. Can we do a little better or whatever the case may be? But there was, there was no driving force, you know, to have that discussion, to make us do that. So in light of our current situation and the previous discussion, I agree we move forward with this, so I'm good with it.
So John, there was no formal vote taken last year. You know, it was more of just, you know, I think your guys' discussion on the record right now kind of gives the consensus of the board. I think that's all that's really needed. Because the, when we engage them next year, we'll enter into a, an engagement, you know, we'll, the First Selectman will sign an engagement letter at that time.
So then, is this just an extension of the existing agreement?
Uh, yes.
So we don't need a vote then. Thanks very much. That was really good dialogue, everybody. Appreciate the input. Review of monthly municipal financial reports, general fund budget report as of June 30th, 2020, unadjusted. Any questions, comments?
So my, Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. So in looking at the report, the year-to-date budget report, page 17, it has the Board of Ed, but it has no actuals for the Board of Ed. There's some reason why that row is, is not filled in with, with a year-to-date kind of number so that the total on the next page, on page 18, is, you know, is reflective of where we actually stand. Yeah, the Munis budget, year-to-date.
So, so Steve, the yeah, so the, in the town budget report, the, the year-to-date actuals for the Board of Ed are never updated. They're, they're moved in manually, and that, that has not been done yet because the Board of Ed general fund is accounted for in a separate fund on the town books to manage the budget. And that, that, you know, so the detail is, is in a separate fund, and it just rolls into that account for reporting purposes, for lack of a better way to put it. So if you go, if you go to the detail, that, that's what you should be looking at.
Okay, yeah, I was interested when I, when I saw page 18 in which the grand total row appears, and I don't have it up because I've got this screen up, but it said basically we were 33% or something like that year-to-date spend, and obviously that's all.
And again, what Heidi usually does is load the budget number in the year-to-date actuals just to zero it out. So it's just a true town side review, and that just hadn't been done. If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I guess there's a part of me that would like to see it, not necessarily during the year, but, but given that the year is, is at least technically closed, obviously there's, there's probably POs and stuff that are still open. I recognize that. So that was just a question. The other question that I have, I'll, I'll hold till we get to the Board of Education side.
Any other questions? Anything on the trial balances of the funds? Not. Month the Report of Tax Collector, Deb, I'm not sure. Is Deborah on tonight?
She was.
I'll take that as a no.
She was on earlier.
Oh, it's Debbie. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Deb. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay, I'm on. I'm sorry. Um, we gave you the reports as of June 30th. Um, we ended the year, you know, considering the COVID situation. I think it's, I'm trying to read my report here. Well, in the, in 90, you know, the, we hit budget by 100 and, I can't even read my
Hold on, 103% or something, I think?
100% of budget. So we are at 98.7, I believe, if I can read this report. But we hit budget last year. We had some ups and downs. Our backs didn't, you know, our back did not, prior year taxes did not hit well because of the COVID situation. People didn't, and we didn't have a tax sale. So we're hoping to pick this, those numbers up this year from the back taxes because we couldn't do anything last year. Collections are coming in. They were slow coming in, but they are picking up, so. I, it's hard to tell because, you know, it's so early in the ballgame because most of the blunt of our payments don't come in till the end of the month.
Yeah, this is Steve Kirsch. Do you have any number for either the number of payments that have been received in these first three weeks or the value from the property tax that's been received? I recognize it's early. I recognize that many people don't send them in until the very last point in time.
The number right in front of me, but it's so far, I think it was, if I, Ron, I sent some information. I was going to say it was around $6 million that we got as of last Friday. And none of the banks are in yet. Of course, they're waiting till the end of the month. So we're, we got one bank in this week. We got Wells Fargo, which was like $2 million. We got that in Monday, but we're still waiting for the other banks to come in.
So Steve, this is Ron. Again, it's early and you know, I think we were about 20, you know, correct me if I was wrong, if I'm wrong, Deb. I don't have the report in front of me, but we were about 20 million shy of last year. But it was, it was the, the escrows coming in from the bank. We get, we got it. We had received it by the 17th last year, and we have yet to receive it this year.
Yep.
So it's
They sent in earlier last year than this.
Apples comparison at this point.
And I, and this is Steve, and I recognize that. I was just trying to get a feel, and that's really, what you've given me is really, is really fine. Let me just ask one further question. When you say that the banks will come in by the end of the month, will you actually get it by, you know, literally the end of the month? Or will they trickle in, in, you know, August, you know, the first few days in, in August? How does that work?
I, I believe the banks will, I mean, I've got confirmation that wires are supposed to be coming in the next couple of days. Um, but I, we have not actually had the funds wired in. We've been checking, so we've been monitoring that. But I did get that the accounts that they are going to pay, so I am anticipating, you know, those payments very soon.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I've got for her, John. Thank you.
John, I have a question for you. It's Rebecca.
Sure.
Um, so during budget time, we, you know, play different scenarios with the percentage of receipt, right? So I guess at the next meeting, we'll, we'll get percentages from Deb and be able to see if, you know, how we're trending, correct? I don't, I don't see how, I'm just a little nervous, right? So it's with, you know, almost a sigh of relief that things are trickling in, but, um, you know, it's definitely something I've been thinking about and just want to make sure that we're watching to make sure we budgeted for the right percentage.
We, we
Yeah, John, Rebecca, this is John. Oh, go ahead, Deb, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, we probably will be getting the funds in. The money is, but it, you know, like it's trickling in and because we, you know, we're still not open to the public except for appointment only, and a lot of people are holding on to their money. I do know there are a few people who have acquired about the reduced interest and everything else. So there are going to be a few people, a few businesses that, you know, called up and said they were hurting and that they are going to take advantage of the reduced interest. But until we actually get to the point by the end of the month, we won't know who is and who is not taking advantage of the situation and who is really hurt. And I know a lot of people are, you know, still unemployed.
Okay.
I, I'm confident we will, the numbers, we, because you guys set the budget very conservatively. I, I feel confident we're going to hit those numbers without it, you know, any, but until next month, you know, we'll have a better understanding, like after the third, what's happening.
Okay, all right, that's perfect.
Yeah, this is John. Rebecca, that's a great question. And yeah, that's going to be on our radar every month. We're going to be checking the water temperature of how collections are doing versus, you know, the targets that we set. But to reiterate what Deb just said, we were pretty conservative, I think, in all of our assumptions, so we, we should be okay. But yeah, we, it's, it's something we need to monitor on a going basis, absolutely. Any other questions for Deb before we move on? Great, all right. Month the Report of the Treasurer, Ron. You volunteered to read that into the minutes?
Yeah, I can read it in.
You got to unmute yourself first.
Ron, you're still on mute.
Sorry, guys and girls. Yeah, Heidi was gonna, okay, it's on the screen there now. So would you like me to read it in, John?
You volunteered, so go right ahead.
Yeah. Okay, Treasurer's Report to the Board of Finance, June 23rd, 2020. To the Board of Finance from Patrick O'Hara, Treasurer, Town of Monroe. Dear Board of Finance members, I am providing this written report just in case my electronic participation in the meeting is interrupted. As reported to you back in late May, the main interest rate that Town of Monroe relies upon for investment income has plunged since the outbreak of coronavirus and the Fed cut interest rates. The stiff rate as of July 22nd, 2020 is 0.19% as compared to 2.41% one year ago. Investment income for the month of June was $11,800 as compared to $26,300 for the same period last year. With the use of designated funds to compensate for anticipated reduction in property tax collections, I anticipate monthly investment income will continue to decline. As long as the Board maintains a policy which prioritizes liquidity over return on investment, our only real option is to continue to earn whatever the stiff rate provides. Should the Board of Finance change outlook and allow investing in illiquid vehicles, please let me know. I have nothing else of a significant nature to report to the Board of Finance at this time. Respectfully, Patrick O'Hara, Town Treasurer.
Thank you, Ron. Will, will not have any questions for him. I'm going to make you answer. I think.
John, you're, you're breaking up, John.
I think we lost them.
Yeah, John, your connection's not good.
Financial report, interest rates. So the general fund appropriation, year-to-date budget report, and special revenue funds. I'm breaking. Can you hear anything? Yes, no? Zero?
Yes, we can hear some of you. This is Steve.
You're breaking up and watching.
John, Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. I have a question on the Board of Education budget on their Munis report, the budget entitled YTD Budget Report dated 7/8/2020. It's approximately the 79th page in our packet. It's page three of the actual report. And I'm looking at the grand total line for the Board of Education, which is saying they were 99% used or on budget. Ron, can you talk about where the Board of Education is? I recognize, again, that there may be open POs or whatever. I'm not sure that I understand from this report exactly where they ended up in terms of a deficit.
So Steve, we don't think, there's, there's not going to be a deficit this year. And this has not been reported to the Board of Ed yet because they have not had a meeting since this has come out. This is a draft report. We are, you are correct. We are closing POs. There, we will very likely be able to make the pension and should have a surplus.
Oh, wow.
There's, there's about $400,000 in POs still to close, though, so to your point. And I know, I know there are some bills hanging out there that are likely unencumbered. So, but, but I'm confident saying we're going to have the, the surplus will be there.
So this is, this, this report that we're looking at in our packet, which says you've got encumbrances of $649,774.
Yeah, so, so, so since this report was printed, another 200 have been closed of purchase orders.
Okay. All right, well, that, that's really terrific news. Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't, you know, the, I don't think it's Yeah, and, and, you know, I don't, you know, the, I, I don't think it's any secret, you know, the, the saving, a large, large part of the savings was in transportation and that was as a result of the COVID crisis. But there were also a lot of, you know, there were also a lot of cost-cutting measures as the, you know, that were put into place pre-COVID that, you know, helped, helped in the, in the long run.
Yes, I'm aware of, of sitting through the budget stuff of all of the myriad of accounts that were frozen, some of which it was frozen for now the second year or at least in a row. So I'm, I'm glad we got to a, as, as low as we did or as close to a balance or even a surplus. So I think that's, that's great. And I think everybody, the Board of Education, everybody in central office, the superintendent, I, I just think it's a tremendous job. I realize there's a ton of pain that was involved and, and hopefully we can avoid that going forward. And thanks, Ron, for the update.
Any other questions, if you can hear me?
Yeah, it's Rebecca O'Donnell. Ron, I had a question. When it comes to this next school year, have we learned, I know in our last meeting it was mentioned, I think by Ken, that there was some federal programs and grants to apply for. But he didn't feel that Monroe was eligible. Has there been any update on that front and, you know, where we think we need additional dollars for the transition as schools, you know, goes into session?
So let me, let me touch on it briefly and then Joe might wanna, you know, add, add some value to the conversation. There's a hundred and fifteen thousand of CARES Act money that will, is, is allocate, will be allocated to the Town of Monroe for the Board of Education. Right now, what we're gonna need for the next school year is probably anyone's guess. We're, we are putting in some PPE orders. I mean, right now, we don't even know what model we're gonna open up with. And Joe can speak on that because there's a, a lot of question marks there. As far as any other funds that are available though, we're, we're putting, we're piggybacking filing with the town for any PPE through FEMA. That'll potentially be a seventy-five percent reimbursement. But, you know, other than that, a, a lot of the funds that the, that are available to the town are more for emergency services. And I can, I can let Heidi speak to that a little bit also. But Joe, I don't know if you wanna expand on the.
Yeah, no, thanks, Ron. Hi, everybody. Joe Cobb, Acting Superintendent. I just, you know, I know when we were, you know, having our conversations in the late spring and early summer, you know, one of the things I know I said here was, you know, we're building a model in terms of the budget, you know, we're, we're building a budget, I'm sorry, for a model that we don't even know exists. So I think, you know, Ron made a good point. You know, we did have some savings, a lot of that. You know, we wouldn't have had, we, we did, we tightened our belts as, as much as we could during the year. And I don't think we would have been out of the deficit if we had finished, you know, with a normal year. You know, so to that extent, you know, COVID definitely, you know, played a major part, especially as it pertained to some of our, our contracts and we were able to renegotiate, especially the transportation was, was huge. But there was a lot of other areas too that, you know, that, that added up. You know, that being said, you know, I have a, a draft plan that needs to be submitted to the State Department of Education tomorrow that, you know, to address reopening the schools in the, in the fall. And basically the charge from the state of Connecticut is that, you know, you have to, and you've probably heard it, there's been enough, you know, enough on TV and, and every town's plans are, are pretty closely aligned to each other. But basically, the state, the state of Connecticut has tasked us with, you know, it's not really a plan for reopening, it's three plans for reopening. It's, you know, prepare first and foremost, prepare because the public health indicators in Connecticut at, you know, as of, you know, six forty-five on July twenty-third or whatever today is, you know, indicate that, you know, we can, we, we might be able to get kids safely back to school. Now, we all see what's going on around the country and I think we're all afraid for when that's gonna hit to us. But the, you know, the, the, the task that the state gave us was, you know, prepare for full in-person learning in the fall with heightened safety protocols. And those protocols, as you can imagine, are gonna require, you know, a, a lot of, you know, a lot of logistical work. The, the, the protocols, you know, first of all, they're talking about cohorting students, which is kind of easier at the, at the elementary school, the kids are already in predictable groups by classroom. At the middle school level, you know, it's, it can be done by team. It's not quite as, as clean as it is at the elementary level. And then at the high school level, you really can't cohort kids because kids travel from class to class. But they're looking at ways to, you know, reduce the amount of exposure that kids have with each other, you know, reimagining the plan. Another big piece of all this is, a couple of other huge pieces that are gonna have major financial implications for us is prepare for full in-person learning, but also be prepared for families that are gonna keep their students home and you need to educate those students as well. And what is that gonna look like? What is, what is the, you know, and that's a, you know, that's a technology, technology, infrastructure, hardware question. You know, how are we gonna either simultaneously livestream this, these, these classes? To be able to, you know, teach kids synchronously whether they're in class or they're at home. Again, this is, this is the, the dictate from the state during this public health crisis. So it's, you know, you have that piece and, you know, the safety measures that we have to put in place for kids. You know, they've backed away from saying, you know, six feet of social distancing, but they're saying maximize social distancing. So it's, you know, remove furniture. In some places, we're looking at, you know, are we gonna need to buy furniture? Because, you know, we have little tables that, you know, multiple kids sit at. You can't have multiple kids sitting at the same table now. You know, if, if we're gonna try to maximize some kind of social distancing. The other big piece is, is obviously the, the PPE, the personal protective equipment. You know, I know Jack Cecchini was putting together an order today to get us started for the year. You're looking at, I think we were over eighty thousand dollars just in, you know, hand sanitizer, face masks.
Eighty-two thousand, two twenty-three.
Yeah, and I think that is, you know, really for, that's money that was not budgeted. Like I said, we, we were budgeting for a model we didn't even know existed. So there, there's some major things there. And that's, that's if everybody is, you know, that's if everybody's in school and some kids, you know, if some families decide to keep their kids home. The other model, you know, depending on what health, what the health indicators suggest, and they have, the state has not defined what that means yet, by the way. Does it mean a rate of ten per ten thousand people or, you know, a certain percentage? They have not defined what the rate is gonna be between when you're full in-person or if you have to go to some sort of a hybrid schedule, which means we're gonna have half the kids in school on, I'll give you a little preview of the Board of Ed presentation that's gonna happen Monday. Half the kids in school, two days, two days a week. And the other half on distance learning, two days a week. Wednesday, a complete distance learning day, deep cleaning day at all the schools with the custodians. And two days of a flip where, where the kids who are out for two days are now in and the kids who are in are now out. So you have this full in-person learning with the ability to keep your kid home and we have to teach them at the same time. You have this hybrid model where you're gonna have some kid, half the kids in, half the kids out. And then if the health indicators suggest that, you know, it's, we have to go back to full remote learning, then we gotta go back to full remote learning. So, you know, long story short, you know, more questions and answers and, you know, really trying to look at, you know, what kind of infrastructure we have to be able to support some of this stuff, you know, we, you know, it's kind of wonky to try to, you know, have someone livestream their, their class with a, you know, with their laptop. But, you know, some of these cameras are, you know, in the neighborhood of like three thousand dollars. And when you multiply that by the number of teachers we have in the district, you know, you could, you could do the math. You're upwards of a million dollars. Again, never budgeted, that's for sure.
John, this is Steve Kirsch. Can I ask the superintendent a question?
Absolutely.
Thanks. Joe, you, you said two things that, that sort of ticked some things in my mind. One, you mentioned technology. We, and I know in the budget that was approved, we put in technology, PC replacements, you know, whatever. Is that being purchased this summer? Is that still on schedule?
That is. Yeah, that is, Steve. And, and we're gonna need that, you know, our goal, I've sent a survey out to families. We're pretty confident that with those purchases, we could be in a position we are, where we are in a one-to-one model this year, not necessarily with all of our equipment, but, you know, my survey that went out to families asked, you know, if they had a laptop for their child and things like that. So between what, you know, and looking at it from a K-12 perspective, between what our families have indicated that they have in conjunction with, you know, what we could supplement on our own, we would be able to outfit, you know, the entire district with, with one-to-one.
Thank you.
The ones are gonna help, the ones are gonna help.
The other thing, just for the record, you, you taught, you mentioned the Board of Ed meeting on Monday is, I thought I understood that it was Tuesday. Okay, I just wanted it for, for this record and for anyone on, online.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's gonna be a really important, really important meeting. Will we give an executive summary of the, of our reopening, our reopening plan that will be submitted to the State Department of Education tomorrow? So thank you, Steve, for that clarification. Yeah, that, that meeting's Tuesday night.
Thank you. That's it, John. Thank you.
Steve, thanks very much. Anyone else? Any questions for Joe? That was a very good overview you gave us with some sobering information. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Hearing none. It's our favorite time to adjourn the meeting. If I can find the paper. All right. Objection to adjourn?
Steve Kirsch motion to adjourn?
Craig, her second.
I'm sure there's no objections.
Do the, for the vote. Craig? I know, but still, for the record. Steve?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
And this is John I as well. So thanks very much, everybody, for struggling through with the technology tonight. Hopefully future will run a little more smoothly. Have a good night, everybody. Take care.